Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Harlingen City Commission Workshop. The time is now 5:05 PM. We'll call this meeting to order. It has been posted as required by state law. We do have a quorum of the commission as everyone is here present. At this time, I'll ask for everyone to please rise as Commissioner Mike Mesmer leads us in our invocation.
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, dear God, please shine down upon this city, and have mercy upon us all here, and that we may follow you in your heavenly grace, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Now, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark?
Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a commission member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion nor vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
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 Item three, citizens' communication. At this time, the public is invited to address the city commission and speak on any matter not specifically listed for a public hearing elsewhere in this agenda. Please note that the city commission members may not respond to comments or deliberate on topics addressed. Tonight, we have nine that have signed up.
Yes, ma'am.
And we're going to start with Leonard Simmons.
Thank you. My name is Leonard Simmons, and I'm here to speak on the property that's being developed on Morris Road by the group out of McAllen. It's the Rhodes Enterprise Group. I've been, I've owned that property since, actually, I looked today. I wasn't sure how long, forty, forty years now. And I've farmed, I've farmed up and down Ed Carey since returning from school in seventy-three. So I've seen a lot of, a lot of changes in Ed Carey, obviously, over that time. The one thing that I think is most important about this is the fact that when we, when we need, when we need to develop something, we need to have someone with expertise to come in and, and do this. And this is a, this is an operation. We were very excited when we were approached by the Rhodes Group because we know that they do planned, planned subdivisions. They're master planners. The people that they have worked with in Adago County have been all very excited and pleased with their, with the end product. We, I was actually farming the property there on, that became Water's Edge twenty years ago. And at that time, this property lays north and west of Water's Edge. We, we feel, we feel very comfortable that the Rhodes Group is going to come in and put in the kind of community that Harlingen needs. I, I live a mile south of Water's Edge, and I feel that it's imperative that we go forward with the city of Harlingen developing planned communities so that we can go forward with something that we can all be proud of in the years to come. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if anybody has anything.
Thank you so much, Mr. Simmons. Okay, next, we have Natalie Lial.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Natalie Lial. I live in District Five in Harlingen, and I'm here to speak in support of the Horseshoe Point subdivision. Rhodes Development is a well-respected development firm that has a history of bringing successful master plan communities all over the valley. As a citizen of Harlingen, whose family is selling this land to the Rhodes, I was concerned to hear that neighbors and friends were upset about the subdivision. So I reached out to numerous people, and regardless of their initial concerns, whatever the initial concern was they expressed, as we discussed and talked about the project, all of their concerned, concerns boiled down to one of two things. The first one being they were upset that they were losing their view, which I understand. It's a beautiful view, but they don't own it. And, or number two, they had been misled by other people in Water's Edge, that Water's Edge had intended to expand into this property, and that those future homes would pay into their HOA. So they were disappointed that they weren't going to have these homes pay into their HOA. But neither of those are legitimate reasons to keep the Rhodes from developing this property. I did tune into the last meeting that you all discussed this project, and while I completely appreciate our neighbors on White Oak and their concerns about their flooding, White Oak drains a different direction than this property, and so it really doesn't affect your decisions about this property because they drain in two different directions. And also, the problem with the flooding at White Oak was identified in 2008 in the city's master drainage plan. And in their master drainage plan, they had a solution for that, and so it has nothing to do with current development or future development. It's been a problem that the city had identified and has identified a solution for. So I would ask you all, I know I've heard all of you speak about supporting growth and development in Harlingen and working on our drainage. So this is your opportunity to show us that you're supporting development in a responsible way, because we know Rhodes does great work. And so I'm asking you to show us now that you're supporting growth and development, and to also help White Oak by following through on the 2008 drainage plan. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lial. Okay, next, we have Ron Lozano.
Good afternoon. I spent a good part of this afternoon listening to our eloquent mayor within eight days, as a Beatle say, talk about how we shouldn't rush into things. And actually, my cousin was there, too, and, you know, he tried to get in some words, but apparently I haven't gotten that far along in the tape. But here, even though you know there's litigation going forward, it was spoken right here, and you can look up the number that Saucy has postponed till Thursday, next, that, why should we rush into this? If the mayor flip-flops so fast, I gave her a whole month. We heard her in August talk about something that I alluded to, and I don't want to take this time because he's going to be here another three years. And, but he heard me speak recently about saying one thing about, oh, we're hands-off with the waterworks and the airport board. But now, on October twenty-eighth, eight days that I just referred to, whole different tenor. That's the same thing here. She plays footsies with certain people. I hadn't seen Leonard in over fifty years, and certainly, as my dad did, I consider him a friend, and he was, he was a hell of a football player. However, right now, I'll say that he's interfering with somebody else's land, and I disposed to him that, well, what if the supposition you have doesn't pan out in the legal matter that we're heading towards? Well, I don't know that we should be rushing into this. That's what I want to convey you tonight. Let's listen to the mayor. Go back yourselves and listen, that you all that didn't go to the airport board meeting last, and there's going to be an important one again tomorrow. And we'll see what kind of flip-flops we have. But thank you again for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Lozano. Okay, we're going to move on to David Barrasa.
Good evening. I know I spoke last time at the town hall meeting. I've gone through, I think it's been about a week now, I've just asked him questions, and there's, there's plenty of concern, right? Just how he said, why rush into this? I have questions that I don't even have answered, and I was recently contacted by the irrigation district asking about, you know, the plan that was set forth for this, for this development project, and water access was, was one of my main concerns, right? And I don't think, and I respect Mr. Simmons, I don't know him personally, but I respect what he's doing, and nobody here should be telling him what to do with his property. It's his wish to do so, right? But I guess the only thing that we are asking is, take it back to the drawing board and make, make a happy medium, right? I spoke with Mr. Lopez earlier, and I, and I conveyed my concerns, and it's too many houses for the residential road, Morris Road. If you guys have been out there, it's, it's a two-lane road, and it's not going to withstand the amount of traffic that this development project is going to bring, right? Three hundred and ninety homes in that area is, is too much, and maybe they would feel a little bit different if it was happening in, in their backyard, because this is directly going to impact myself, because my home is, is going to be right there in front of this, this project, right? And I'll say this, I am for property development, but this is, this is, Rhodes Construction doesn't have a footprint here in Harlingen like we do. There, it's, it's a business, right? And I contacted somebody from, from Rhodes Construction early on in the week, and I asked them, and the first thing he asked me is, are you for it or against it? And I said, well, it's like, I'm for property development, but I'm against this project, only because it's a mass amount of homes for this neighborhood, right? And at the end of the day, it's, it's a money thing, right? How much can they maximize their business? And I asked him, you know, how, what would you do if you're in my shoes? And he said, I understand where you're coming from, right? So he knew where I was coming from, and I asked him, I said, would you be doing the same thing I'd be doing? And he said, yes. So he understood where I was coming from, but at the same time, I understood where he was coming from, right? It's a business for them. But for us, this is our, this is our major investment, right? This is our homes. And I am more than positive that each and every one of you would be here standing in my shoes if this were your home as well. Plenty of you, almost all of you, I read up on, when you guys ran your campaign, and most of you, one thing that you guys commonly said was, you were going to, you were taking this position to be here for the people of Harlingen, right? The people are here, and we're speaking against this project, not, we're not telling him what to do with his property. This is going to directly impact us as a community and as residents off of, off of Morris Road. If any of you could imagine, like, can you imagine, what, six hundred, eight hundred vehicles trying to get out of one road in the morning? Like I said, I'm just asking you to do what's right. There's a, there's guidelines set that the city of Harlingen has, right? And they're asking for six variances. There's a reason why there's things in place to be followed, and I'm just asking you guys to please reconsider and listen to the people that are coming here to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrasa. Okay, we're going to continue with Kate Pope.
Honorable mayor and commissioners, thank you for holding this workshop and for listening to our voices. My name is Kate Pope, and I've proudly called Water's Edge home for over twenty years. I spoke at the last meeting, and I'm here again, not out of habit, but out of a deep concern for the future of our neighborhood and our city. We all want Harlingen to grow, but growth must be thoughtful, it must be responsible, it must respect the people who already call this place home. After the last meeting, I spoke with several knowledgeable individuals. While some concerns were addressed, the core issues remain. My neighbors and I visited the Paso Real subdivision, which is supposed to be similar to the Horseshoe Point plans. What we saw only deepened our worries. The lots are small, the homes are packed tightly together, the materials appear to be lower quality, there's even a large pothole in the new street, and the traffic, it's dangerous. I was nearly rear-ended just trying to turn into that subdivision. Water's Edge is a community built on pride. We maintain our parks, our sidewalks, our homes. We invest in this city, not just with our money, but with our time, our care, and our belief in Harlingen's future. We expect new development in our backyard to reflect that same pride, and Horseshoe Point, as it's currently designed, does not. The projected home prices, three hundred sixty-five thousand dollars on small, high-density lots, don't align with what we've seen in similar developments. It doesn't add up. And the traffic study, it defies what we experience daily. Morris Road is already overburdened. It's narrow, shoulderless, and at times dangerous. Add four hundred homes from Horseshoe, a hundred more from the Allison subdivision, and two hundred employees from the new prison hospital funneling through Morris, and you're looking at a crisis in the making. And let's not forget, two hundred eighty homes beside, behind a single entrance. Whether it's two lanes or four lanes, it is still one road in, one road out. We've seen what happens when that fails. Just ask South Padre Island. We are not anti-growth. We're pro-community. We want development that lifts us all up, that enhances property values, that keeps our roads safe, and our neighborhoods strong. Harlingen has ordinances to protect our quality of life. Let's honor them. Please, don't approve these variances. Let's reimagine Horseshoe Point into something that reflects the best of Harlingen, not something we'll regret. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pope. We're going to move on with Diana Garcia Padilla.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you again for allowing me to speak. I actually sent a message out to everyone, and that's what I was going to speak on, but after seeing the posters, I'd like to speak on something else. The subdivision that you are talking about is by Water's Edge, and that subdivision is, has its own issues on what you will approve and not approve. But in the plans of that subdivision, they're looking at the ditch in the back. And that ditch in the back, they're planning on widening. They haven't told any of the other, my neighbors, my neighbors don't know that. But I stumbled upon it. Today, I look at the, the posters, and on one of the posters is a picture, and it's a misleading picture. It's a picture of my neighbor's property that is by my property. That picture shows that it floods. What they don't tell you is that they, from Allison subdivision, had plugged up the pipe that let the water go through, that the trash that was in front had blocked all the water. They only took a picture of the flood, and they posted it. So we have to be careful on the misleading information that has been given to you, and, and then you're approving by, because you're, you're thinking that they're honest and fair. This property that they're talking about subdivision is going to have a ditch in the back of some of my neighbors, but then it comes across my property again. You're going to need to take my front property for the street, my side property for the ditch, and you already are wanting to take another piece of property that you won't go into. Think about it. For somebody who is, has information and is trying to mislead, I think, for the benefit of themselves. Think about it, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Padilla. Okay, we're going to move on to Tom Hutchins.
Mayor, commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. We talked a little bit about this before. Remember, we're talking about the, our main concern is the variance on the road. That is a concern. We've already talked to you. We are, you already know how busy that road is. But here's a couple of things that we kind of forget. This is in the ETJ. It is still in the county, right? Doesn't follow city guidelines, doesn't follow city ordinances. It is going to be developed inside the county. My suggestion is you annex that property first, and then go ahead and do it. But you're saying, I understand this, I used to be a commissioner, I understand as well, that if you build those over three hundred homes, now you're going to have to convince three hundred people to come into the city. And when you try and convince three hundred people, why would they want to come into the city and become annexed when they're getting all the benefits from the city already, without paying those taxes? Why would they want to do that? You may say, well, it's an RETJ, and we can actually make sure that people who are in ETJ follow the guidelines of the city, which is not true. You have twenty acres on Morris Road that is running a dump site, and has been running a dump site for years, and there's nothing that you can do in the city to stop that. We've tried in the county. It's a very difficult thing to do, to be able to go up and clean somebody's yard. We've already gone to TCEQ. We've gone through everything. Now, I've spoken to the chief as well, the fire chief, and he showed me plans. He told me that they are going to be able to get fire trucks in there, which they probably could if it was within the city. But since you don't have ordinances that you can affect outside in that area, you're going to have trailers parked, you're going to have boats parked on the street, you're going to have extra cars parked on the street, and what can you do to prevent that? You can't, because you cannot enforce those ordinances. You say, well, we're going to widen Morris Road. You know, the county still owns half of that road. You guys say, well, we maintain the road. That's not true either. I saw the county maintaining the side of the county road today, as a matter of fact. I think Harlingen maintains one side, you maintain the other. If there's some damage on the street, you guys come out there and hope Blacktop it, but I think that was the agreement given when we joined together with the county to be able to pave that road. To enhance that road and get it to four lanes that you guys want to do, that's a lot of annexation, that's a lot of going into the, the property, that's a lot of, you know, getting these things and getting people to be able to get those roads. And if you do annex, I can always tell you that I've been in the city for twenty-five years. When you guys annexed that property, and I think one of the commissioners knows you were there, there was a lot of promises made. One of them is that we'd have sewer, we'd have, you know, everything on there. To this day, we still have no sewer. We're still on septic on Morris Road. While you have two lift stations, I called the water department, I said, can we actually get, you know, sewer? They said, no, you're going to have to get an engineer study, you're going to have to put the pipes in, you're going to have to run them all the way to the station, and that's because we've been a citizen in this community for twenty-five years, and we still don't have that. Why would you want to be annexed to the city if you already got all those things that are coming, all the benefits of the city already from this project? So that was my two cents in it. My advice is just annex it first, and then go into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchins. Okay, we're going to continue with Sylvia Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mayor Sepulveda, commissioners and neighbors. My name is Sylvia Gonzalez. I live in Water's Edge, and I'm a real estate broker. Tonight, I'm here as a homeowner, and on behalf of many families who love our city and take pride in our homes and neighborhoods. We all value growth, and we one hundred percent support affordable housing, when it's done right. Growth has to be balanced, compatible, and sustainable. The development that is being proposed, our homes valued at roughly half of ours, and with lots less than half the size of ours, and this raises serious concerns. First, has nothing to do with the view, or the view that we do have or don't have. I never heard of that before. Lower-priced homes next to higher-valued homes pull down appraisal benchmarks, period. Our homes lose equity, resales become significantly harder, and the city collects less tax revenue. Protecting property values means protecting the financial future of our families, our neighborhoods, and more importantly, our city. Second, higher-density, lower-value developments often mean more traffic, more drainage challenges, everything you've been listening to here from everybody else. Water's Edge invests heavily in maintaining strict standards in our neighborhoods, such as landscaping, maintaining private parks, the lighting, I mean, we even power wash our sidewalks. Adding a development that doesn't meet similar standards risks overwhelming shared systems and lowering the quality of we, what we've all worked so hard to build. Third, this development does not align with the city's vision in our area. Our zoning was designed for high-quality, balanced growth, and protects architectural cohesion, landscaping, and neighborhood character. Approving this proposed subdivision as-is sets a precedent, excuse me, signaling that standards in Harlingen, Harlingen don't matter, and making it harder to preserve the integrity of our city's growth in the future. This isn't about income or who lives in the homes. It's about basic math and market behavior. Lower-priced homes beside higher-valued ones reduce appraisal benchmarks, which decreases equity, tax revenue, and more importantly, demand for the residential market in Harlingen. We are not against growth or development. We want it done right. We respectfully ask the commission to raise the minimum home square footage and lot size to align with existing homes in Water's Edge. Maintain architectural and landscaping standards consistent with the area.
Ma'am, your three minutes are up.
This decision is about more than one subdivision. It's about what kind of city we want to be. We're not asking for anything special, just the same care and protection you would want for your own neighborhood. On behalf of the Water's Edge community, thank you in advance for your help.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Okay, last one is Alice Uribe Cera.
Hi, good evening. Alice Uribe Cera, fourteen oh six White Oak. I know I've been at this podium a few times within the last few weeks. We've discussed the White Oak concerns. Predominantly, my concern specifically is drainage and flooding. I'd like to remind you all that we lived in a hotel for four months this year, from March to the beginning, end of July. That was devastating for us. So I'm not, like a lot of people have said today, I'm not pro, I'm not against development, but we want it done responsibly, and I respect the Simmons as a family. They're, you know, a strong family here from our area, and has all to do with how this will affect my home, my family. Will we get flooded again? How are these plans going to affect the long-term livability of White Oak? And I know that there were some plans in the future, master plans for the city to make improvements. Who is going to pay for the improvements? Is the development going to, you know, pitch in on their side? Is the city going to pitch in and do their side? There's a lot of questions. Also, regarding the traffic with this new, proposed new subdivision, I think there was kind of discussed about widening the road, making it larger, and then according to the text dot standards, that the footage, you know, from the entrances are enough to justify, you know, the code variance to be approved. But I don't know if that's considering the fact that it's right now a thirty mile per hour road. If you all widen it to the four lanes, it increases speed limit, and then the standards change, and then we've got problems a little bit later down. So just a couple of things to think about. I know that in the past agendas here, the Fire Prevention Bureau had not approved those plans. So I'm curious to hear about what Harlingen Fire Department has to say about it, and get their feedback as well. So thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Cera. Okay, mayor, we're going to move on to...
I had signed up to the city...
For a regular meeting.
No, for both. I signed up two of them.
We only received... Okay, Mr. Reyes, yeah. Okay, one second. We only received one entry for him.
All right. Well, I think it's not shot above the level of this process.
Would you allow him to speak?
That's fine. I'll come back for the regular meeting. We have a little problem with that. My bracket, Barbara's calling now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reyes. All right. We, we definitely appreciate everyone coming out and providing their feedback. I think it's important for the commission to consider. But truly, I really want to get into the workshop part of this. I think that is the reason we invited all of you all to here. So if we can move on to the next item, Ms. Myra.
Yes, we're going to move on to presentation and discussion on a variance to the city of Harlingen code of ordinances to allow one instead of two required entrances for the proposed Horseshoe Point subdivision located in the three-point-five-mile ETJ on the south side of Morris Road, approximately two thousand ninety-five point ninety-seven feet southwest of South Ed Carey Drive. We have, and this item was tabled during the regular city commission of October sixth, twenty twenty-five. We'll need a motion to remove it.
So, Mark, I don't know that this needs to come off the table, since this is a workshop, and it's not on the agenda. I think it'll be next on the city commission to come off the table, or what is your recommendation?
I mean, you can, you can move to take it off the table, since it was tabled. It's fine.
On this workshop?
That's fine.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion?
Motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Anna?
Yes. Good evening, honorable mayor and city commission. So Milton and Hunt, the applicant, is requesting a variance from Article Five, Section one oh nine, one twenty-four, C nine, of the city subdivision ordinance, which requires for residential subdivisions of thirty or more lots to provide two access points located at a minimum distance apart equal to one-half of the length of the subdivision's maximum overall diagonal. This item was previously tabled at the October sixth and the October twentieth city commission meetings, as previously mentioned, and city commission at that time requested additional information... as previously mentioned, and City Commission at that time requested additional information related to public safety concerns. Horseshoe Point is a proposed single-family subdivision located west of East Carey Drive along Morris Road. The project covers approximately 90 acres and includes approximately 390 lots that will be developed in four phases. Approximately 9.2 acres are designed for parkland and open space. The subdivision ordinance requires access points to be spaced at least half the length of the subdivision's diagonal. In this case, the length of the diagonal for Horseshoe Point is 2,988 feet approximately. Therefore, the required distance between the two entrances must be at least 1,494 feet. I would like to point out that the proposed subdivision provides two entrances on Morris Road. When the item was presented to PNC, the proposed distance was 160 feet, and that was also, that information was presented at the last City Commission meeting. However, based on revised drawings, this distance has now been increased to 200 feet. And so, to mitigate the reduced spacing, the applicant is proposing at least three mitigating measures. First, the proposed, the first proposed mitigating measure is the widening of the proposed twister street, which is about 65 right-of-way, to prevent a choke point where the two internal streets converge. The minimum required right-of-way, just for reference, for local street is between 50 and 60 feet. Second, a future stoba connection on the east boundary that will eventually connect to Morris Road, that's also being proposed. This additional entrance will be located approximately 1,400 feet away from the furthest proposed entrance. Lastly, a future stoba connection is also being proposed on the west boundary to connect to the adjacent parcel once it develops in the future. Right now, that property is actually vacant or undeveloped. Now, Article 2, Section 10927 of the subdivision ordinance provides that the Planning and Zoning Commission may recommend to the City Commission a variance from the subdivision ordinance when, in its opinion, undue hardship will result from requiring strict compliance. Variances may be recommended only when in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the subdivision ordinance, so that the public health, safety, and welfare may be secured and substantial justice done. Financial hardship is not a consideration for deeming an appropriate hardship. And no variance shall be recommended unless the Planning and Zoning Commission considers five required findings, which are gonna be, they're listed in the ordinance, and I'll try to go over them briefly. The first required finding pertains to if there are special circumstances or conditions affecting the land, such as the strict application of the provisions of this chapter, will deprive the applicant of the reasonable use of the land. And so, it is the staff opinion that the property is irregularly shaped, severely constrained by existing physical and surrounding development conditions. It also has limited frontage along Morris Road. And to the east and south, the property is already bounded by existing residential development. To the west, the property is largely limited by Horseshoe Lake, and overall site conditions are not self-created by the applicant, which is very important in establishing a hardship. And here's just an area of all of the, I guess, the surrounding existing land uses. And so, as you can see, most of it is, it's a single-family, and then the Horseshoe Point, I'm sorry, the Horseshoe Lake.
Which way is north on that map?
Down, downwards. So this is looking at it from Morris Road. South.
I'm used to looking at maps in the north side.
I'm so sorry. I was trying to like provide context.
All my topo maps.
Yeah, so I'll stick to showing to the north. Yes. Okay, so the second record finding is the variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right of the applicant. And so, staff believes that the approval of the variance allows for reasonable subdivision design consistent with surrounding development patterns. And right now, the existing subdivision development pattern is mostly low-density residential development. And we found that the, according to the city's future land use map, the area is designated low-density residential. So, the proposed development aligns with that designation. So, just for reference, low-density residential, according to our comprehensive plan, is between one and eight units per acre. In this case, Horseshoe Lake is about four units per acre.
Okay, may I ask a question?
Yes.
To the northwest of the property, who owns that property? In the green?
So, the green is technically Horseshoe Lake?
Not the property with the yellow line going through it. And the green property, heading northwest, north on Morris.
Talking about the area right next to the Horseshoe.
I think that consists of a number of different owners, right? So, a portion of this land, like, if you go west of Hacienda, you start having a bunch of different owners, those are the little yellow boxes, and then you go west of that, that's other owners.
Okay, not, not one or two owners?
Correct, there's, I think, like, 20 owners of that land, west of that yellow strip.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. Okay, so, third, the granting of the variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or injurious to the other property in the area. And so, again, the variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare to other property in the area, most surrounding properties are already developed. Fourth, the granting of a variance will not have the effect of preventing the orderly subdivision of other land in the area. So, again, the variance will not adversely affect the development potential of adjacent properties or nearby properties, and so, most surrounding land are already developed, as previously mentioned. Lastly, this one, I mean, the developer must pay all required impact fees, and that's something that, you know, that they're required to do by the subdivision ordinance. And the developer also plans to install a lift station and complete all required water and sewer infrastructure consistent with Harlingen Water Works and wastewater plants.
So those people will have sewer?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. So, staff recommendation is, so, just for reference, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended...
Anna, just sorry, that lift station, will it only service that development?
No, it will not, and I think we have already in Robert's presentation, as well as the developer, they're gonna be discussing that extensively. So, again, for reference, the Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended approval of this variance request without conditions. And they also technically approved the variance when it was proposed, when the distance was 160 feet between the two entrances. So, this is actually a modified recommendation. So, based on concerns about public safety, staff recommends approval of the variance subject to the following conditions. And again, these conditions can be revisited later after the presentation, or you're more than welcome to add any additional conditions. And so, that concludes my presentation. I wanna hand it over to Robert, our city engineer, so he can go over the drainage, unless there's any questions.
Yeah, I have a question for Mark. So this is not in the city?
Correct.
Not yet.
So shouldn't it be annexed first, and then we go with this? Explain this to us all, please.
Sure, absolutely. So, Commissioner, basically, what the city would do, because this is a voluntary annexation, this is not an involuntary annexation, and it...
So, with this proposed action, they will voluntarily annex into the city?
So, one of the things the developer is asking for is this variance in order for them to agree to be annexed, okay? And so, if the City Commission was to approve this, that approval would be conditional on the annexation of the subdivision.
Okay.
Because right now, you're, it's in the ETJ, the variance wouldn't have any effect right, if it was adopted. It would have, it would come to effect contingent upon the annexation into the city, which hasn't happened yet.
Okay, and then, other question. So, in theory, Morris Road needs to be widened, and it doesn't look like it can be widened on the north-northeast, but it would have to be widened on the north-northwest, which includes this property. And so, these variances doesn't include getting rid of four, six, or eight houses as Morris Road is widened, sooner or later?
That's also gonna be part of the conversation, I don't know if you wanna wait for that, the widening of it, but I think by ordinance, just so you know, they need to dedicate 10 feet additional right-of-way in front of Morris Road. So, but they're gonna discuss that right now. And just, just to clarify, so technically, as each phase develops, that's when the annexation is actually gonna be officially in place.
Okay, so the property will not be annexed in all at once?
No, it's by phase. That's, that's the services agreement that was signed, and, you know, by City Commission.
So, Anna, this phase is supposed to be over seven years, is that correct? The development is, is seven years, and so, if this variance is contingent upon annexation, how do you ensure that that occurs every step of the way?
So, they, so right now, the understanding is that the whole development is treated as if it was inside city limits. So, the common, the earlier comment is completely the opposite. They're actually doing everything or designing the subdivision to meet the city's standard, as if they were already annexed into the city.
I understand that, but the question is that, as was brought up in terms of, you know, what comes first, right? The chicken or the egg?
Yeah.
It's the annexation or the variance. I understand that it sits in our ETJ, I understand that they are complying with the city guidelines, which is why they're requesting the variance, so that way, the goal is to ensure that they're within the city. But the question I think is being asked is, do, if you are, if this is going to be built out in phases, how do you condition a variance that the life of those, of the, of the construction, right, of the development, that it becomes annexed into the city? Why is it not annexed at the same, like, at the beginning of Phase 1?
So, the variance is for the entire master plan, so...
Which is my point.
Yes, so, we already have a services agreement that has been adopted, been approved by City Commission, and so, the understanding is technically that they already annexed, but it, the annexation becomes in effect, like, then the terms have already been negotiated, but it won't become effective until each of the phases gets approved. And so, we won't approve the phases without complying with the master plan. That's also being approved.
So who's to say that one phase is within the city and then the others are in the county?
I mean, there's a possibility that maybe, you know, after the, let's say, the first phase becomes annexed, and then the second phase, I mean, if they wanna develop it, it should, all of it is gonna be annexed. So I don't think that will be a, a real possibility.
Okay, we can, we can circle back to it after. I just, I think that was a valid point that was brought up, and I think we need to make sure that we have solid answers. But for the sake of time, let's move into our city engineers.
I think they're gonna be addressing a lot of those concerns.
Yes, yes, thank you. Okay, one, one second, Robert. That was gonna be my question. We have a posted meeting, Mark, at 5:45 for City Commission. Do we need to, you know, recess this one, open the City Commission, then go into recess, finish the workshop, and then go back?
Correct.
Okay, just give us one second. Bear with us. All right, at this time, we are going to take a short recess from the workshop. The time is now 5:48 PM, and we are in recess. Now, the time is 5:48 PM, and we opened the City Commission meeting scheduled for 5:45 PM of the regular City Commission. We do have a quorum present, as we have all commissioners present. And at this time, we will also be going into recess for the City Commission meeting. The time is now 5:49 PM, and we will resume shortly. All right, now moving back, the time is now 5:49 PM, and we will resume our City Commission workshop. Robert?
Hello, everyone. My name is Roberto Hernandez, city engineer. What I'm gonna be discussing will be some of the drainage and traffic concerns that was brought up on previous meetings. So the first exhibit I'm sharing, I have the ones for the screens, so for the people that are seeing it online can see it too, but also I printed some exhibits, so that the people here, in case they can't have good vision, they're able to see it. So the first exhibit is located on the left-hand side, it's the first one on this page. So what it's showing, it's the recommended master drainage plan for the new, from the new master plan being generated. And one thing I wanted to highlight is the Horseshoe Lake Resaca. This has been proposed to be converted as a regional detention facility. Right now, it's owned by the Irrigation District. Most of the ditches in this area are owned by Irrigation District. We are working with them to transfer ownership. Some areas, we do have, like I said, we already own part of the Limscom system, but it's scattered. As part of this development, the development approached if they could do anything partnership with the community, and the first idea I had here was converting this lake for them to do the improvements, right, clearing it and providing the connection. So part of the discussions was to provide a crossing on Morris Road. Right now, there's only a 28, 24-inch pipe. It doesn't really do much in the, for the community, but the proposed improvements would be three pipes, 48-inch pipe, that will connect the ditch from north side of Morris, south. Widen that ditch that's only 40 feet wide, or be wider, and connecting it to the Horseshoe Lake. A good comparison here is the Lozano Pond. Lozano Pond is 15 acres, it holds the volume, 60 acre-feet of volume. This property, the Horseshoe Lake, is 60 acres, and the volume, right off the bat, once the connections are made, it would be 480 acre-feet. So that's about eight times the size of Lozano Pond, for comparison.
Okay, let me, let me see if I understand. So you're talking about Horseshoe Lake?
Yes.
Which is just a dried Resaca bed right now?
Yes, sir.
Digging it deeper and wider?
Correct.
And, and we, or the Drainage District, have the rights to do that?
Yes, the Irrigation District, Irrigation District Number 1 owns it. They're already transferring ownership to the City of Harlingen.
Okay, and then will there be, will we need any archaeological work there?
Not to my knowledge. With the meetings we've had with them, no.
With whom?
With Irrigation District, because it's been a Resaca, it will be converted as, for detention.
Okay.
Who, were you done? Who would be maintaining?
At the moment, it would become city property. So just like the ditch is being converted to us, kinda like the Lozano Pond, the maintenance would fall upon us.
And, and there's no outlet for this?
Not at the moment. So the first phase is converting that Horseshoe Lake into a detention facility and connecting the ditch north of Morris, south. So this will have an immediate effect on everything north of Morris. So, White Oaks, the model shows, once all the master, all the improvements are completed, if another 500-year storm, kinda like the one in March, happened, automatically, two feet of water from being on the streets would be mitigated and be put on the detention facility.
And you mentioned three pipes?
Yes.
Draining to Morris Road. What's on Morris Road to handle three pipes full of water, floodwater?
So right now, there's only four, 24-inch pipe that is, it just adds to level the water. The whole intent of those 48-inch pipes is to bring the water from the north side, south to the Horseshoe Lake. And then, the next phase would be on the west side of the, of the exhibit. It shows a future expansion that will drain the Horseshoe Lake to the Arroyo Colorado.
New channel to connect to Resaca.
Yes, that would be as we continue improving the area. Because right now, everything drains north through one outlet, through the Limscom drain, across the Sea Expressway, and that's where the choke point is. During heavy storm events, water will increase and start backflowing. It'll backflow into your streets, your inlets. So the whole point of this regional detention facility is for that water that's gonna backflow to backflow to this point, that would be the new load.
So what kind of pumps are you going to use to bring the water?
It would be the corporate crossings, the pipes underneath Horseshoe, the three 48-inch pipes. It wouldn't be pumps, it would be created, just by gravity, yes, sir.
I'm impressed with that, 'cause I know the Lozano Detention Pond has had a major impact in your district, and this, I'm...
Eight times.
Yeah, eight times, eight times.
The volume.
So I can just imagine the, the impact it's gonna have on the drainage issue.
And then, with future expansions, this is the first phase. Once you connect it with pipes, it's eight times the size, and it's projected that we could widen it, double that. That would be, once we start excavating ourselves, but what it has right now, it's eight times the volume of Lozano Pond.
Okay, let's take a step back.
Yes, ma'am.
You said immediate relief, right? We have some concerns in the community, flooding, things of that, things of that nature. We have some concerns in the community, flooding, things of that, things of that nature. When you say when we start excavating, who, who's we?
It's essentially, I'll be, kind of like, whenever we have projects, we're presented to you, we'll use drainage crews to widen ditches or detention ponds, but that would be.
This Horseshoe Lake that is being presented, is the developers are going to do this work?
Correct. They'll be doing the corporate crossings and clearing the, the overgrown vegetation in addition to the detention they're required to detain for their development.
And this will take two years to dig this out?
That was my next question.
If we look at Lozano Pond, which is a tremendous success, that was almost a two-year project. And you say this is going to be eight times Lozano Pond. This is going to take two, three years to dig.
The, the big difference there is that the Lozano Pond, we excavated the material, right? We brought it up five to six feet deep. It's already eight feet deep, those 60 acres. So it's essentially, you're now utilizing the, the Resaca for it. If we ever want to widen it, then that's when the additional time will kick in.
And then I've studied, I've worked with hydrologists and cave systems.
Yes, sir.
Water doesn't like, running water doesn't like right angles, and these pipes are all at right angles. Just pointing that out.
Okay.
So again, circling back, time, timeline, because you said immediate relief.
Yes.
What is the timeline for, for this improvement?
For the improvements, the, the developer or Meldon Hunt could provide a better timeline once they're approved and can do construction, but as part of any subdivision, the drainage requirements would be one of the first things they do. The utilities, they wouldn't be able to build anything, not even roads, until the utilities, everything that goes underground gets done first.
Okay.
So the drainage will come first before they actually start building the homes and all that other stuff?
Correct, yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay. I'm sorry.
No, no worries. Appreciate the questions.
I think that these are questions that the, that the community wants to hear.
Yes.
All right.
So at least that's the big picture for the Limscom drain system. The next exhibit I wanted to show was to differentiate, kind of like the Watersedge, Watersedge drain to another Resaca, Resaca Los Fresnos. At the moment, they're not hydraulically connected between the Horseshoe Lake and the other development. Part of the master plan does show, or it is recommending for us to do improvements, but that would be converting the same thing, that Resaca, into winding it and providing more drainage, providing more outflows to the Arroyo Colorado. But I just wanted to show that difference, that right now, that Horseshoe will drain in one direction, not at south.
So you want that Horseshoe Lake to drain where? North?
It will be northwest.
Northwest?
Yes, to the Arroyo Colorado.
Okay.
So now it would have two diversions.
And so this Resaca conversion, it will not tie into the Horseshoe Lake?
Not anytime. It might be in the future, just in case one.
Who owns the Resaca? Number 26?
Also Irrigation District.
Which one?
Number one.
Okay, thank you.
And at least they've been, they've been very, very good partners. They're open for us to do all this improvements, this collaborations. They were one of the first ones to sign the MOU between us and them.
But again, this is not the city coming in to make this improvement.
Correct, not at the moment. This would, I would have to bring it in case we go out for a grant, but I just wanted to show that we do have plans for overall community. The next exhibit, I just wanted to show some improvements that have already started or have been approved. So the first one is on the Louisiana and Limscom. There is a development, winding the ditch. That's the image on black. On paper, it's the exhibit on the right-hand side. So on, on black, on the northeast, they're winding the ditch, they're adding an additional 40 acre feet of volume. They're going to develop it, but in the future. Right now, they just want it to be removed from the floodplain. And right now, the right-of-way, it's 60 feet, and they're making it 240. So they're winding it, we're going to be getting the benefits by, we, I mean, in case rain event occurs, now there's going to be more volume within the ditch system. Another one is Sunrise Meadows, a bit going east, is the area in blue. They're winding the ditch 45, 65 feet, and all that volume, again, it will help the overall system.
Who is they?
Sunrise Meadows, this is also a contractor doing the work. That was Affordable Homes Developments. They're expected, I reached out to them, they did get approval, we had a pre-con, pre-construction meeting with them, and they're expected to start early January 2026, those improvements. And then lastly, we have the Limscom drain system east of Louisiana, and on that one, it's the city doing the improvements. We have 100 feet of right-of-way, right-of-way eastman. I just wanted to show an area of partially already widened and, and some of it that had the old channel that was only 12 feet wide. This one is still in the works. And lastly, the images on the top left, it's where everything drains. It drains to the Arroyo Colorado. We cleaned the, the site, there was a lot of overgrown vegetation, and this was through city crews. Again, Irrigation District gave us permission to go in, and we cleaned the, there was a lot of debris, and on the top-right image, you see how it looks after the improvements. And lastly, I wanted to touch on the traffic. So the statement earlier, it is correct, half of Morris Road is owned by the city, the other half is the county. On the previous commission meeting, you guys recommended for me to already start reaching out to the Cameron County to see if they would be open for us doing the full annexation. I have already sent that email to Mr. Benjamin Washam. I should be hearing from him, hopefully by the end of the month, but he's going to take it to his commission for, for hearing. If approved, then I'll send the official request with mits and bounds. Right now, the right-of-way, the existing right-of-way is 60 feet. It's a local street, that's how it's shown. At the moment, we're not requesting more feet, it's only what's the 60 in total. So we wouldn't be, I know the comment earlier was about if we're going to be taking people's property, if we decide to widen it, the answer would be no. They're 60 feet, within a 60-foot right-of-way, you could fit 37 back-to-back, that's the original design, but you could even go wider, 44, two lanes in each direction, and still have enough space where you're not doing right-of-way acquisition or anything like that. I wanted to touch, yes, sir.
So if we approve this, then the county says, well, this is your land, not county land anymore.
Correct.
And they have no financial incentive to widen Morris Road on the southern end. Would that be a correct observation?
So right now, the people that are responsible for the road, the north side of the road is the city, potholes, things like that?
Right.
And south, it would be the county.
Right. If this, if this land gets annexed, then the county has no more responsibility?
Correct. It would be us.
Okay, and then that becomes an Oscar question, and a financial question. That's going to be major surgery.
I'm still going to bring that item once I get no opposition from Cameron County, because what you approved was at least the, for me to begin the original, the initial conversations, which you guys still have to do the amendment or annex the right-of-way of Morris Road. So that would be in the future.
Robert, you did a traffic study on the existing conditions. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, that's the next part. So as part of development, whenever it's a large scale, they're required to do a traffic input analysis. I met with their team. Meldon Hunt is doing the development. They hired a subconsultant, KCI. His name is Oscar, he did the traffic input analysis. And on that image, it's the first image here. So the first thing I wanted to talk about, we look at intersections, things that might be added. Right now, Rangerville and Morris and Rangerville and Ed Carey, there, there's no signals. You have to do something called a warrant study. Essentially, depending on the amount of traffic right now and projected on the future after a development occurs, that study will show if Techsa would approve the signal installation. So I looked at both of them, and the results were that even with a full build-out in the future, assuming all 390 homes are built with existing traffic, it's not warranted. So even if we wanted to build it, Techsa would deny it. It, it would be until more and more development occurs that that signal, warrant intersection would, would be triggered.
So what comes first, the chicken or the egg again?
For, for the signals?
Yeah.
So the signals, it's, they're not installed until traffic, the traffic study shows that we could add it.
So what, so can you summarize?
Yes.
In layman's terms, what it is that you're trying to say regarding existing conditions? Should nothing be changed? What does the traffic study state for this build-out of phases?
So the recommendation was for no traffic signal infrastructure to be installed at either intersection, because even with all the development of this Horseshoe Pointee and the existing traffic, it's not being warranted by the study. So warranted just means that you can't really justify the installation of a signal. Even if we applied for a grant, the highway safety improvements, they would look at the same warrant study and deny us for that.
So in other words, the traffic's not going to be bad enough?
Correct. Techsa will not let you install the signal until it gets to that point. And you could justify the projection, right? And part of the study did, right now, what we have at the moment, and when it's, once it's fully built out. And even then, the numbers didn't justify the installation of a signal.
Did the, did the future projection study incorporate the subdivision at Morris and Louisiana?
Yes, sir.
And did it also incorporate the facility, the state facility at the corner of Morris and Rangerville?
Morris and Rangerville, I, not, not that one, because it hasn't been built. Whenever, let's say another development comes in that, in a year from now, they decide to do something of this large scale, they'll still be required to do a traffic input analysis, and maybe then it'll be updated.
But that state hospital's moving forward. I mean, they're already there. That's what you're talking about, right? The expansion?
Yeah, correct, right across the street from where the current facilities are.
Yeah, because they, they do put counters and they measure all the right turns, left turns that's going on on Morris Road and the intersection. So if the facility's there already, those were incorporated. But if, if it hasn't been built and the traffic is not being generated, then they couldn't do it at the moment.
Furthermore, have we done a, perfectly related, are we doing a study also in Louisiana because the same traffic's going to go from one to the other?
Yes. But at the moment, it's not being warranted. The, the big ones I wanted to look at were Rangerville and Ed Carey, because at Louisiana, if you go north, there's the Expressway, and there's already signals there. So there, maybe in the future, it could be widened, but here, the ones that don't have any improvements are those two intersections.
And going back to something you said earlier, have we done, just on a map, a diagram of what that right-of-way will look like on Morris Road? Because I think there's some houses near the intersection of Oceenda and Morris that are pretty close to the street, as well as there's some houses on the corner of Ed Carey and Morris that are pretty close to the street with their backyards. They just put up fences there. And so I worry, sometimes people build over their boundary lines, right? And what does that look like? Can you just, in the future, get me a map with those lines?
Definitely.
Thank you.
The last point, I think I was just going to say about the, the road. There's 60-foot right-of-way, yes, we could widen it. My plan is if, if Cameron County says they don't have any opposition, I'll bring it up to you. You guys would vote if we want to annex it or not, and if you say yes, then we'll just start adding it as part of the street improvement program, doing it in phases, maybe quarter-mile, half-a-mile. It's a one-mile, 1.5-mile stretch, but that would be, once it's, becomes fully city of Hardinjin property. But those would be decisions you guys would be able to vote down the line.
Going to Commissioner Mesmer's point earlier, let's presume Cameron County does give us the authority to annex Morris Road, and then we do decide, regardless of whether we move forward on the subdivision or not, we decide we're going to widen it, go the, the four, four lanes, whatnot, how are we going to afford, how are we going to pay for it?
So that would essentially be where we do it in phases and using the street improvement program funds. I did look at the current, how do I say, conditions of the road, and on the report, on the I work queue, the street assessment, it did show it as a good candidate for this district. But it would still be presented, and you guys would vote add it, deny it, or shrink it, increase it, the limits.
So you're saying we would be tapping into that water bill money?
Correct.
That water bill money? Just to do an expansion?
For any, any road, but yes.
And if we would focus on just one street, it would probably take half of our annual budget for the whole length, and it would be 37 feet, it would be two lanes and then a turning lane in the middle.
It'd be five lanes total.
No, no, no.
No.
Three.
Two lanes.
The ideal place would be one on each way with a center lane, curb and gutter, drainage. That would be what I would recommend for a 60-foot right-of-way. If we want more lanes, we would have to increase it, and only future developments would be required to do right-of-way dedication. So knowing that there's already a lot of developments, I would only recommend keeping it at 60, and only adding that additional lane throughout. But at the intersections, you do have corner clip areas, you could add a right turn, left turn, and incoming, that would be adequate.
So, Robert, Phase One, how many, how many homes?
It was going to be 48? 120. And, and their presentation has it by year and how many they'll have.
Any question then? What is the average size of the average lot?
I think that's.
There'll be a question they'll be able to answer.
Okay.
Yes. If there's some other questions.
I do have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if you have the answer to this question. If not, we'll wait for the developer, but I asked Anna about the lift station, what it will serve. Can you, if it?
They do have an exhibit, I.
You kept that right.
Yeah, so they'll show it, but it will serve a lot of the undeveloped community, so, or trigger more development.
Are there any questions for, for, for Robert?
I have one question for her, I'm having to get to.
Okay, can we get Anna to pop back up here real quick? Just because we also have another meeting.
I know, I know. Anna, before you showed the diagram of the, of the footprint, right, the design, and you showed that there's going to be two, I think you called them stub outs?
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, east side.
One going to that property that's for sale on the west side, and then one to the east, which I believe is like Yahweh Farms or something.
No, it's not.
There's one to the right though, right?
Yes, there's to either side, east side.
Okay. Just because there's a stub out in the plan, this current plan that's before us?
Right.
Does that give the city the authority to require, let's say, that the, the lands on both sides of those stub outs?
They have to.
If they develop, can we enforce them to?
Yes. When they come back and apply, you know, to get the property plotted, yes, we will require to connect.
And those stub outs were requested through engineering, because the minimum is two access points, but the way I look at it is, where can future potential development occur so that you could have interconnectivity going north, south, east, west? And they do have one more connection on the southeast that was being requested, so they're a new revision, and they'll show it on their exhibit, it does have one stub out into a property.
That too, that's a new development. I didn't want to talk about that one, just because that was a revision, so that wasn't originally presented. So they're going to actually discuss that. But regardless, it's not an engineering or planning, that's actually the ordinance that requires for that street connectivity.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions for either of them?
Is this a question? This is the pointer. Yeah, but it doesn't work. There it goes. Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. My name is Mario Reyna with Meldon Hunt. I'm the president of the firm. Meldon Hunt's been around since 1947, we've done a lot of subdivisions over the years. I'm here today representing Roads Development.
A little closer to the mic.
I'm here today representing Roads Development, who's the development arm for Esperanza Homes. Esperanza Homes is the largest land developer, home builder in the region. I think this year, they're on pace to build 900 homes. They take a lot of pride in the communities that they build. They're one of the few developers that I work with that basically adds a park to every community that they do, whether it's a private or public subdivision, and they maintain it themselves, right? So you essentially get a public park that you're not having to pay for maintenance and you're getting taxed on. What you have before you is our vision for Horseshoe Pointe Master Plan. A few key points, this, this is not final. This is our preliminary. I think when it's all said and done, we're going to present a PUD that'll be taken action on, about 350 lots. The average lot size as presented is 7,180 square feet, which is in excess of the code of 6,000.
And what's that in acreage?
We're at 4.3 per acre, and if you do a 50 by 100 lot.
So, so it's 0.27 acres per lot on average?[1784.64]
Sure. Yeah, I think so. It's four, it's four point three lots to the acre is what it works out to. Little, it looks high density, but really, when you do a traditional subdivision, you know, you get five, six, seven to the acre. I think your code outlines up to eight to the acre for high, for low density. The home prices here will be similar to, to Paso Real, which is starts at two sixty. There'll be some homes up to five hundred thousand. So it will be a nice development. This will have almost a ten acre park. We have allocated one point seven million dollars to build out this park. It will have a playground, basketball courts, walking trail, whatnot. As mentioned before, this will be a, a private park that's privately maintained, but it will be open to the public.
Who's going to maintain that park?
They have an HOA system throughout all their communities. They, they, I think the HOA is maintaining about four thousand homes and multiple parks. If you go out to Tres Lagos, all the hiking bike trails, all the parks, all the lakes, the pavilions.
How's the HOA enforced though? Because there's a bunch of subdivisions that require an HOA, but then the HOA is never subsequently created.
Well, this is one, it's one developer. They have their own HOA arm. So they, it's one O HOA across all their developments. They, they charge an assessment fee to all these residents. And so it is well kept. And I think I go across all their communities all the time because they do multiple phase communities. And the grass is cut, the grass is green, you know, it's well, well in order. And so as I go through these slides, you're going to see that I'm addressing some of the concerns that we've heard over time. I think the big one and the one that we're here to talk about today is the entrances. So essentially, we're doing what we can with the allotted frontage that we have. Can you guys hear me okay? And we're providing two stub outs. And so that, that's all we can really do at this time. And we've worked with engineering and planning to accommodate the requests of future roads and connectivity with the future developments. And you may say, well, it's not connected to anything, right? That's the easy thing to say. It's not connected to anything today. There's a reason it's not connected to anything. There is no sewer. So this area has four parcels that are, are primed for development. I've worked personally on the blue and on the green. The blues fell in out of contract because he found out he had to do a one million dollar lift station. The green bought it in foreclosure, tried to tie into the white oak lift station and was denied. So it's been sitting as agriculture land in the city of Harlingen due to the fact that they don't have sewer availability. Service area map. We have a signed agreement with Harlingen Waterworks today to build a lift station. This lift station will cross approximately a million dollars. The preliminary bids we're getting are in the nine hundreds. And it will have a three hundred acre service area. So as people, oh, there, there is an existing lift station there for white oak. It wasn't designed correctly. It's undersized and has problems with the community that's tied in today. The plans are for them to abandon that lift station and tie into the new lift station. But this will be open for all the communities within this three hundred sixteen acre service.
And this list station will drain to where, from where?
A lift station is for sewer, right? So we're going to be pumping it to the north to an allocated manhole that then has a line that crosses the highway. I don't have a picture of that as far as this presentation. But we have an approved location to tie in that's been studied by Harlingen Waterworks.
And Mario, what is the timeline for this lift station?
Lift station has to be in place prior to recording phase one, ma'am.
Okay. But in your, I'm sure you have an aggressive timeline. You've got a goal. What, what do you envision?
First quarter twenty seven.
Do we have anyone from Waterworks here?
And then one, one thing I didn't touch on, we have a service agreement. I think the annexation was discussed. There's a, there's a proposed service agreement that will be brought to you. And as part of this project, the next meeting, the next hearing we'll have is to approve a PDD, a planned development district. And part of that PDD, it'll be create an ordinance and we'll have to annex as we buy the property. That'll be part of the agreement that'll be brought before you. I think they're on revision three, but I think we're, we're pretty close to bringing it to you guys.
So.
And buy the property from Mr. Simmons?
So we're buying it in three chunks, right? So chunk one will get annexed immediately now that we're owner. And as we annex, we would have to, as we buy, we would have to annex is the way that is presented. But we'll have a PDD that that gets recorded that locks us into what we're trying to do. So when you vote on this PDD, this will be a recorded document. So what we're showing you, we have to build, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
You know, the, the choke point, it's come up a few times, right? What we're doing is essentially a four lane road, fifty seven feet of pavement section. This road that we're proposing for this section that will be fire striped has more similarities to Ed Carey than it does to Morrison. So we're doing what we can do with the allotted land. It can move four way traffic. We will fire stripe it. Happy to answer your question.
And this is what you're going to connect to Morris Road with, a four lane road?
Not really. I'll take it back a little. So if you look here, how does this work, Robert?
Subdivision.
In this area here.
I'm sorry?
In this area here that I'm, I'm highlighting.
Okay, got it.
Excuse me?
Oh, no, I was telling him it's on the screen.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's in this area here.
This laser wasn't.
At a choke point. So we have a larger area there, but we're actually following your master drains report. So we're putting a hundred foot cross section ditch. There's a traffic study. Do you guys have questions on the traffic study? I have the traffic consultant here. Martin Robert doing okay job presenting that.
Does anybody have questions for the, I mean, we have it in our, in our pockets in the previous meeting. Do you have any question? Do you have any question?
I had already read it.
No? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Oscar, is there anything you think we should add?
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner Oscar Garza, KCI subcontractor for Meldonah Hunt. You know, like the mayor, I was trying to take notes when the public was up here bringing up concerns. You know, we, we are all for growing responsibly. That's, that's our ethical commitment to, to the public. And so I wanted to specifically bring up traffic generated by this site. The number six hundred to eight hundred vehicles was, was brought up. You know, this, this site calculated at three hundred and ninety lots, which I guess has now come down to.
Three fifty.
Three fifty. The max in the morning would be two hundred and fifty seven total vehicles split west and east. In the PM peak hour, that'd be three hundred and fifty seven vehicles split west and east. Again, that's worst case scenario based on three ninety. So reduce that by another probably fifty vehicles because now it's at three forty on the conservative end. A two lane roadway, just to kind of, some additional context, the volume threshold that we look at from a traffic perspective, we associate two lane roadways and their capacity to about ten thousand vehicles per day. With this development, again, worst case scenario based on lots, three hundred and ninety lots, we're looking at less than forty five hundred vehicles per day. So just from a traffic perspective, capacities there for the two lane, two lane roadway. And as Robert did a good job in pointing out, at both critical intersections, we're maintaining what's considered level service A. And that's based off of, of total delay expected at these intersections. So again, as he pointed out, even if we did try to go for a traffic signal, Tech dot would deny that. That's really all I wanted to point out.
So I do, I have a question. These homes would vary between two hundred and sixty thousand to five hundred thousand. There were some comments made about the type of homes and, and things of that nature. When you say this price point, do you have, and you probably don't have in front of you, but what does that breakdown look like? Is there one house that's, you know, at five hundred thousand and the bulk is another? What are, what are the different square footage, I guess, in these type of developments where you have multiple type of, of homes? That's the pet of the week.
Tell us to hurry it up.
And I'm just, you know, so that way we have an understanding of what this development looks like. Is there someone to answer that question?
Brad Frisbee from roads. Thanks for allowing me to come up and the privilege. It's, we're still land planning right now, but my guess would be some of the larger ones would be in that, you know, fifteen percent number range. Okay. I can't tell you how many lots. We're still land planning.
And square footage of these houses from the smallest to larger?
Total seventeen hundred to four thousand.
Seventeen hundred minimum?
Correct.
And four thousand on the larger?
Yes, ma'am.
On the larger side. Okay. And I hate to belabor the, the, the point, but within the first year of construction, a hundred homes?
I have a slide on that. I'll skip to my last slide and kind of go through this.
All right.
And so I think this is somewhat of a misconception that we're going to get to, you know, four hundred homes in one year. Phase one's, it's just over a hundred lots is what we're going to propose. We're still working on the PDD. But there'll be twenty eight homes built by December twenty twenty seven. That's two years from now. You know, planning this, building this, grading this, doing a lift station for this whole region will take us over a year. And then it's going to be forty eight homes thereafter. And that's the same page that we have at Paso Real, which is about one start a week. And that's the available manpower that we have to build in this community. And that's what's selling actually right now. So that's the trend that we're following. We anticipate a full buildup by twenty thirty five. Have some anticip, you know, going back to the road and how do you pay for it and how are you going to maintain it? On the left side, I have some, you know, projected tax revenues. It's based on three eighty eight, so it will fluctuate. But I think over, over its life, it'll be a great producing community for the city of Harlingen. And I was going to go just quickly. I know everyone wants to move on to the meeting. But this is the FEMA land floodplain viewer. This is today. What FEMA thinks happens today, is it always right? No. But is it pretty close? At times, yes. This shows that white oak has some major problems. They're not created by this community. They're not created by rivers. They have probably the way it was designed. I'm not sure. But we've worked with the city. You know, if we annex, we have to follow your master drainage plan. If we, we do something in the county, not so much. And so we've worked with Roberto and we identified flows. And we're proposing much more than we would need to do for our development alone, which is constructing offsite drainage for an area we don't impact. But we're, we're willing to partner with the city and partner with your engineering team and hopefully brings immediate relief to, to white oak. There may be some channel improvements that need to be happened north of there. But the heavy lifting is installing these pipes crossing the road. And we're going to do that with our project phase one.
When Horseshoe Lake is being dug out, are you going to save that dirt to elevate your properties?
No, sir. So at this time, we're proposing to clear it for the city. So the city is still in the process of digging it needed over to them from the irrigation district. We, at our cost, are spending about a hundred and ten thousand dollars to clear it.
Okay. So, so where's the dirt going to go?
It's already eight feet deep there.
It's super.
No, but you got to dig it deeper than eight feet, right?
Not necessarily, sir. You have the option to, is what Roberto alluded, alluded to. But at this time, it's a significant amount of capacity.
Can you go back a slide to the, the, a homes that are being developed? I think there's one more homes by twenty twenty seven.
Okay.
Yep. Right here. Okay. So for those that are following at home, twenty eight homes by the end of twenty twenty seven. Prior to twenty eight homes built, there is a lift station on Horseshoe Lake is fully, because we were talking about, you know, the city's done this in, in district, in district two, and that took quite a significant amount of time. I understand the differences and us, you know, having to do, to do the work and the digging and where this is already kind of primed for this type of development. Are you saying that those things will happen prior to the construction of any home?
I'm saying that if we stay on schedule and start construction in the second quarter of twenty six, these will be the first two things that we do. So the drainage will be immediate first thing that we do. In all projects, we do drainage first. So if you get a rain, the water has somewhere to go and you're not flooded out.
One thing is to start a drainage project. The one, the second is to complete it.
I don't think I've ever done a project for roads that we haven't completed.
And drainage and the lift station. This is a pretty significant investment on y'all's part.
It's about six to seven hundred thousand in drainage alone and about nine hundred thousand to a million in sewer.
Right. And I know that Harlingen Waterworks, I know this has come before them and there's been discussions and approvals for the lift station over there. So I just didn't know what the timeline looked like. And I just want for, to have an understanding that those things and, and that's kind of, I think that what the purpose of this workshop is to have, we're at a very premature phase with those variants, but there's a lot of concern around those two things.
No, I understand. That's what we're here to explain and kind of air out some of the concerns.
And so back to voluntary annexation. What I heard earlier was you will annex as the homes are finished.
No, sir.
Which, is that correct?
No, not at all. So the proposed annexation service agreement that we've gone, we're on revision three with your attorney. It'll be brought to you at some point, shows that we're annexing as we buy it in chunks. So right now, we buy it in, in chunks. So it's ninety, ninety acres we're buying it.
Okay. So not when the house is completed, but when you buy that chunk of land and you're getting ready to develop it?
Prior to breaking ground, we will be within the city of Harlingen city limits.
Okay. So as it is, it's raw farmland. It pays very little to no taxes to speak of. This will take ten years for us to annex land and get taxes.
I think they were connecting correctly. It'll be annexed in twenty twenty six, thirty plus acres. And then in subsequent year, the other thirty, and in a subsequent year, the following thirty. You'll have this all annexed within the next four or five years.
Okay.
Is there, I know that, I understand, and Anna did a good job about negotiations and how things have already been moving forward. What is the reason to not annex? I know that you don't own it at this point, but what is the, the reservation of not annexing the total and then moving forward in, in the phases?
I think that's something we could look at. Like I said, we're presenting a PDD and that'll lock us in to developing what we're proposing. But we would have to visit with the landowner on that and that'd be offline.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions?
Excuse me. You said you would build three hundred and fifty homes instead of three ninety?
Right now, we're not presenting a land plan to you. But when I come back, it'll likely be in the three fifty range. I'm not saying exactly three fifty, but between three fifty and three ninety.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to clarify Mike's point, or just to understand it from what Mike was saying. So we would start collecting taxes according to your chart, revenue from the land or your development from, starting on twenty twenty seven?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So not ten years, twenty twenty seven?
No, sir. So it'll take us ten years to build it out. But we're going to be annexed prior to getting notice to proceeds and plat approvals.
Okay.
So what you'll see next is the PDD. And then subsequent to that, you'll see a plat. By that time, it should enter into an annexation service agreement.
All right. Thank, thank you.
Thank you so much.
No other questions? Great. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So do we have fire?
Fire department is here. They were available for questions, but they have no official, you know, no formal presentation.
Okay. I just, I think there was some comments made, chief, of, at prior, that there was some denial. And can you just kind of clarify what the position is?
Sure. Good evening. The Fire Marshal's Office, they represent the Harlingen Fire Department when it comes to the planning and zoning meetings that we have. The Fire Marshal's Office responsibility is to enforce the twenty twenty four fire code, which was adopted by this board. So they let us know that there was only one entrance. And so that's why we're here. We're here for a variance. It does not meet the code. Those, that entrance does not meet the code. So at the planning and zoning, the Fire Department requested the widening of that street that you guys saw there for the two lanes. They also requested the right amount of hydrants, you know, when it comes to fire safety. And the future stub outs, that's the intent of meeting the code. And so that's what we're looking for, the intent of meeting it. Now, we also noticed that the clearing of that pond, there's a lot of brush land that was there. So that was a concern to us. So we were glad to find out that they're going to be clearing that land. Now, the variance request is before you now. So I'd like to point out that there's been other subdivisions within our city with just one entrance and they've been given that variance by probably a different board. So that is why we're here. As far as the Fire Department is concerned, the Harlingen Fire Department is confident that this development will have safe fire protection for that this development will have safe fire protection for future citizens and recommends approval of this variance.
Okay, and, and the cul-de-sacs and the bends and all that, you're comfortable with negotiating emergency vehicles?
That is correct. I, I go through the city every day. I, I go to a particular area to go get a, a protein shake, and it, it happens to be on D Street, and I think it's Pierce in that area. It's no different than that. There's a lot of cars on the roads, and we're, we're able to maneuver through there.
On those, on those past variances, have they been upwards of 200 homes?
They, they haven't been that big. They have not been that big. There haven't been that many. They're over 30, though. They're over the, the threshold. That they required a variance.
So they're not 200? How much over 30?
I'm not sure. I'd have to look back. I can get you that answer. And I'm confident that in 2035, if nothing changes, if those stub outs do not happen, I'm confident that the Fire Department can still go in there and provide protection for them, for future citizens.
Thank you.
You guys are on board 100%. You guys are on board 100% at the Fire Department.
The Fire Marshal's here. If you have any questions for him, I know he's the one who, he's following the code. The code says that we have to have the, the two entrances in certain amount of, of length, and, but that's why we're here for a variance.
Okay. I just wanted to, to reiterate, because I know that was one of the major concerns that some of the, some of the residents had brought, and I know that was one of mine, the safety, the safety, but-
Sure.
If you're behind it, I'm good. I am.
Any good questions for Chief? Thank you.
Thank you.
Does, excuse me, does the Fire Marshal have anything to say?
Is it possible to see the exhibit of the variance?
The one that Mr. Layton was showing to the mayor and the commissioner? Could he, one of the Fire Marshal, Mayor, Commissioners? When I did the review, we as a team have to look at everything that's in the subdivision ordinance. So the subdivision ordinance has a criteria, and that criteria allows me to do a step-by-step process, and that's what I did. For the phase one development of a planned development in the ETJ, and then to find out that it's going to be annexed in the city. When you annex into the city, and you get the planned development designation by zone, I believe the color is like a gray color, so this whole area will be colored gray for a planned development, all the phases. It has to be designed because zoning is critical for that area for any development to be allowed. So as you can see here in this exhibit, I've never seen it. Why? Because it doesn't need the variance.
Pardon me?
It does not need the variance. That exhibit does not need the variance. Why? Because it's showing a connection to an existing subdivision. But if it's not going to be connected to that subdivision, and we're going to take the one that's on the southeast, northeast side as the next connection to future development, the variance has to be captured in the planned development, that it's critical, that that will allow the subdivision to eventually comply with the ordinance. We cannot have an HOA dispute. We cannot have, we don't want you to go through our subdivision, because it's critical that subdivisions are now interconnected for them to comply with code. It does not exist when Waters Edge was developed, because they don't have a street projection for future growth. So the verbiage that we're now applying to development, it's critical that it be captured. And on the planned development, it can be captured. So that's one of the bits of information that I provided to the P and Z Board when they asked for my interpretation of why I said no to the variance. I said no to the variance because it doesn't comply with the subdivision ordinance, which creates the variance. And then it goes, make your presentation as to what part of this makes it difficult for you to comply with the ordinance, and they did a great job. They did a great job of explaining how difficult it is to comply, but can you take this option as a future recommendation to eventually comply with the ordinance, which is the southeast that goes north? That is how eventually they will comply with ordinance. But it does have to be captured in the verbiage when you do the planned development. And so that's why, as we do other subdivisions, interconnection has become very critical now. No different than drainage. It's all interconnected, it all has to be planned, and the team does a great job. I believe the team tries their best to capture every project on a case-by-case basis and provide the information to the team, and then from the team it comes to you. So I think on this one, if we don't get the one that's going into Waters Edge, the one in the future, a date unknown, does have to be captured with some good verbiage on the planned development ordinance, so it can eventually comply with code. Any other questions?
When does that planned development code come into effect? Is there a timeframe, a date?
Yes, sir. We've submitted a preliminary one, but we let staff know that we'd like to make some modification to it, so we're already in the process of submitting. We've already paid the fees. I would like you to see it latest January. There's an advertising period, and it has to go to planning and zoning, so latest February, but this is something that we would like to get approved in the first quarter, and we'd like to get started in the second quarter.
Okay, so what we're not doing today is approving a plat.
You're not approving-
We're just approving an annexation with the theoretical plan.
Just the variance.
The variance.
All I'm asking today is a variance, so I could proceed with the PDD.
And this is kind of what I said at the very beginning, at the outset before, is that we're kind of in a very preliminary phase. It's, it's just the variance. There's so many steps moving forward, but I think this is a great opportunity to hear about the vision and the future of the development. And from what I'm hearing from our Fire Marshal is that any development that doesn't meet the specific code, of course, there's going to be a, you know, a denial, right? Because that triggers the variance, and that's what this is, just like any other, any, the whole purpose of having this opportunity for variance is when these situations arise. But it also does sound that it, to me, based on the Fire Marshal's presentation, and, and really staffs as well, is that there's a lot that needs to happen in order to get to construction.
Yes, sir.
It's going to be contingent upon making sure that everything that's being presented is actually going to be able to come to fruition, and that's where you all need to figure out how you're going to get that done, but that's not before us today.
That's correct.
Do you anticipate any more variances?
So whenever we're doing the COVID design, we end up with a number of them, but the number of them are minor, right? So lot frontage, block length, this and that.
So instead of showing these two streets here, it's going to be one, but it's going to be four lanes wide. Is that correct?
No, sir. We're building two streets under Morrison, but since I don't meet the spacing requirement, they're considering it one. There will be two streets built with phase one.
Okay. It'll be down at the choke point, that it'll be four lanes.
The choke point, yes, sir.
Okay.
And with the creation or the implementation of your lift station, does that benefit or impact that land or that other project you're working on that's abutting this property?
The, the property's currently negotiating a contract with the, with a client of mine. My previous client was the Lugo family from Donna. His family, he's a city commissioner down there. He picked it up and dropped it because, you know, we met with Harlingen Water Works, and we met with your staff in pre-development meeting, and it doesn't have sewer. You have a lift station, it just doesn't work. So I have a good feeling that that will develop here promptly. The other one, the other property to the east, I hear something that's in divorce court, I don't know, it could be all hearsay, but with sewer availability, I, I do believe you'll see more development in this area.
Any other questions? Thank you, thank you. All right. If there's no other questions from the commission, I think that this concludes our presentation on this workshop. We appreciate everyone's input. We appreciate staff's hard work and everyone coming out to, to really hear what the future looks like for this potential proposed development. And so we, at this time, having nothing else left on the agenda, we will adjourn the City Commission Workshop. The time is 6:45 PM. And we're going to take a brief pause, I can just- All right. The time is now 6:59 PM, and we will resume our regular scheduled City Commission meeting. And we will move on to the conflict of interest, as we've already conducted the other prior. Mark?
Under state law, conflict of interest exists if a commission member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion or vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
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 Okay, we're going to move on to item three, announcements. With respect to items not listed elsewhere on this agenda, the City Commission may report on items of community interest, including announcing community events, announcing employee or community recognitions. Item 3A, Mayor's announcements. Mayor?
For the sake of time, I'm going to go ahead and forego announcements. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move on to item B, City Manager's announcements. Mr. Garcia?
None of this.
Okay, item C is City Commission Member's announcements.
Real quick shout out to Co-Compliance and Public Works for helping out at the clutter cleanup that we did at the end of October. Well done, thank you so much.
I want to thank everyone who went out to vote. Thank you very much.
I bet.
Well, a special thank you to those voters.
I've made my comment.
If all goes well, maybe on, what is it, Oscar, November the 15th, we'll have a cleanup at the Rangeville Park. Thank you.
I did want to make a quick announcement and shout out. I know some people at home may already know, and maybe some people in the crowd, but the Harlingen South Band competed last week at the area competition, and they, and they placed, and they're headed to state next week. They'll be, they'll be performing in San Antonio on Monday at the Alamo Dome, so I just wanted to give a big shout out to the Harlingen South Band. They played tremendously last week. They were awesome, and I'm looking forward to seeing them on Monday there at the Alamo Dome. This Sunday, they're going to have, we're going to give them a send-off. At 9:30, they'll be departing Harlingen High School South and heading over there to San Antonio. The HPD and the Fire Department has graciously agreed to escort them out, so I encourage the entire community to go out there, come over there to Dixieland, go to Harlingen South, and let's give these kids a fantastic send-off, because they've earned it after hours and hours of, of practice. I know my son's in the band, it's a lot of stuff that they do, so I encourage the entire community to go out there and just celebrate with them and wish them good luck as they go out and compete and represent Harlingen out there in San Antonio next week.
We're going to move on to item four, proclamation, presentation of awards. 4A is Harlingen Animal Shelter Pet of the Week.
Oh, I'm so sorry. We heard him upset earlier. Being delayed.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission. I know Halloween has just passed, but tonight, we have brought Casper. And Casper is here from the Harlingen Animal Shelter. He hasn't been with us that long, but he is patiently waiting for his forever home. He is about eight months. They have him listed as a collie mix. He's very active, very personable, very friendly, and he's just patiently waiting for his forever home. Anybody who wants to visit Casper or any of the animals at the Harlingen Animal Shelter is welcome to call 956-216-5250, or go by the Harlingen Animal Shelter at 1106 Markowski and visit Casper or any one of his cat or dog friends that's there in the shelter. And just to let everybody know that the animal shelter will have animals out at Tractor Supply this Saturday from 10 to 2.
Awesome. Well, we hope Casper finds his forever home, and I just want to congratulate you on all the incredible work that's been happening over at the Harlingen Animal Shelter. I encourage everybody to, to follow their page. Lots of stuff happening, and I know that you had a ton of donations from the community and an outpouring of, of support, and, and so we want to thank the community for coming out and, and supporting the shelter. And I've been following all the adoptions and stuff at the event, so thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
And Casper can go home now.
Well, I think he's going to wait for just a little bit.
Oh, that's right, we have the next one, right? Okay, moving right along.
Moving on to item 4B, it's a proclamation for National Animal Shelter Appreciation Week.
Good evening, everyone. So today's proclamation is recognizing National Animal Shelter Appreciation Week, and I will read the proclamation as follows. Whereas animal shelters and the dedicated staff and volunteers who operate, provide them with essential services that protect animals, reunite lost pets with their families, and help find new loving homes for countless animals each year. And whereas animal shelters serve as vital community resources by educating the public about responsible pet ownership, promoting spay and neuter programs, and supporting animal welfare initiatives, and whereas the compassionate and tireless work of animal shelter employees, veterinarians, animal control officers, and volunteers often goes unrecognized despite their crucial role in ensuring the safety, health, and well-being of animals in need. And whereas the National Animal Shelter Appreciation Week provides an opportunity for citizens to express gratitude for these important community institutions and the individuals who dedicate themselves to protecting animals, and whereas we encourage all residents to consider adopting a pet from a local shelter, volunteering their time, donating supplies, or otherwise supporting our community's animal welfare organizations. Now therefore, I, Norma Sepulveda, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of November 2nd through the 8th, 2025, as National Animal Shelter Appreciation Week in the City of Harlingen, and encourage all residents to support their local animal shelters and consider adopting, volunteering, or donating to help improve the lives of animals in need.
If you'd like to come up, Shannon. And the team.
Good evening again. I want to take just a minute to thank every amazing person who works at the Harlingen Animal Shelter for their dedication and compassion. Every day, they pour their heart and soul into caring for homeless animals in our community, and it shows. Their love, teamwork, and commitment truly make a difference in the lives of animals and families who welcome them into their homes. I also want to say a special thank you to the Mayor and the entire City Commission for your support. Without your support, our job would be 10 times harder, if not more. So we want to also thank you for your support. Thank you.
Well, I think I kind of jumped the gun earlier, saying all the great stuff that y'all are doing. It's been a long night, but really, truthfully, I know that, you know, everybody out there is in it for the, for the right reason. You do, you know, you do hard work, and I have been following along on this journey with you, and I'm, I'm really impressed with the team that you've put together, and I just excited about the, the future, and there's so many grants that we just got. And so I know that it's just going to increase opportunities for these pets in our community. So, so thank you so much. I'd love for the commission, I know we're running short on time, but if we can all still take a, a photo, and Casper's ready to go, so let's do that. take a photo, and Casper's ready to go, so let's do that. All right, moving right along to citizen communication.
Yes. At this time, the public is invited to address the city commission and speak on any matter not specifically listed for public hearing elsewhere in this agenda. Please note that the city commission members may not respond to comments or deliberate on topics addressed. We have Mr. Ron Lozano.
Good evening. A moment ago, you heard the city engineer refer to you as a board, and I don't know that I have a quibble with that. However, as you'll notice in 10B, it says a uniform procedure, and after a semicolon says providing for equal access by board members, but in between, it says commissions. I don't know in the Harlingen if there's anybody besides you that's referred to as a commission. And the city commission had long held that title. I ended up finding an 81 charter about three or four days ago, and of course, we had one from the 50s also. But whether you are a city commissioner or not, I think the vagueness and the lack of a lawyer not following the spirit of the law under the current Attorney General granted, Paxton, equal access, what does that mean? I inquired of a commissioner or two during the break. Does that mean that everybody's going to get entitled to two minutes to speak, or three minutes to speak, or whatever the chair decides on agendas for city boards and departments? So because the law is that you guys could discuss this item and then the public might be more intelligible. I understand that I've been making a lot, because that's what I mean about not following the Open Meetings Act. Even you guys are required to every now and then brush up on it. And 551.007B, written by a local legislature, is not being followed here. So we heard in another item here in 10 that the white oaks would not be affected because it goes in two directions. You heard the city engineer just tell you that gravity will be the basis for setting the gradient to Horseshoe Point Lake. And who's going to absorb that cost? The city is. So the topography has not been discussed whatsoever by all these experts that we have here. So we don't know whether it's north, southeast, or west, as Commissioner Mesmar alluded to, what is up regarding the gradient that the engineer proposes. So again, you, I think, should wait before you make a decision on this variance. You heard, this is not going to be the last of our variances. They're going to come whenever they want and get another variance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lozano. Next, we have Raymond Reyes. Mr. Reyes?
Raymond Reyes, 7069 Ticket Drive here in Harlingen. So right off the bat, I just want to say that on the last meeting, I was kind of like cut off. I had some people watching that that worked for me. $1,500 an hour guys said that that was wrong, that that shouldn't have been done. Again, that's not my specialty, I have other specialties, but I do have people that look out for me, that's what they get paid for, to do. I think that this particular project that I kind of stumbled across, as the other things that I was doing, being that I used to be a partner, that when we owned Cottonwood Country Club, we had several different entrances, we were trying to do an expansion, that was one of the things at that particular time that was required because of the traffic, we had the dog track to consider. There was a lot, you know, it was just, had just opened, so I think the concerns are there, that has to be taken into account, you know, to make the best decision for the citizens, not for, from what I've heard, and I hear all kinds of things, the backdrop of the original connected individuals with this development. I'll just leave it at that for now. I went to another board meeting on some other concerns that I have brought up before in regards to what's going on with the airport situation. We had just somebody just resigned that was a key figure in that. Fortunately, I had to step out to go attend to another meeting that I was already set up for, and I guess some type of disagreement ensued. We're not always going to agree with opinions, but we always got to remember that we're doing the right things for the citizens of Harlingen, for the city of Harlingen, not for our individual opinions. There's rules in place that got to be found, that got to be followed, and one of those is Toma, which actually, I kind of, to be honest, forgot about it, and I was a board member for the downtown district, which is no longer in place, but I'm getting up to speed on that. So my recommendation as a citizen and a concerned citizen of Harlingen, being here for a long time, is to make sure we follow the rules that are in place, because in the end, everything always catches up to us. As long as we're trying to do what's best for the citizens of Harlingen, everything will be fine, you know? Sometimes we have a tendency to way off to other directions from other influences. I've seen that happen too many times, and it will catch up, trust me. And I actually take a great joy in making sure that happens. So especially, you know, we don't want to be taken advantage of as citizens, we want to make sure that our elected officials do what they're supposed to do. With that, I'm out to my granddaughters cheering, that's why I'm all Harlingen today, sorry about south, and congratulations, Commissioner. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And we're going to move on to item six, approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting of July 16, 2025.
Is there any amendments to the minutes?
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item seven is consent agenda. No discussion is anticipated on any of the items in this section because they are routine business or included in a budget adoption. Process or have been previously discussed as a staff report or discussion item. These items will be considered collectively by a single vote unless a commission member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda.
Anything need to be removed?
D, please.
Anything else? Is there a motion for items 7A, B, and C?
Make that a motion to approve, 7A, B, C.
Okay, motion. And a second by Kinsey, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item seven, D. Is it 7D, Commissioner?
Yes.
Consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on second and final reading for rezoning request from not designated district to general district for 6.08 acres, more or less, head of south part of Block 5 Highland subdivision located south of South Expressway 77, approximately 845.39 feet east of Maggie Lane. Commissioner?
Yes, I oppose this at the last meeting, so I'm opposing this again.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. And let's just make sure, moving forward, anything that's not unanimous, remain on the consent.
Okay, we're going to move on to item eight, staff report and other discussion items. Items in this section are not expected to require action by the city commission and are generally for information only. However, any item listed in this section may become an action item at a future meeting with the request of the mayor or after the request of any two commission members or city managers. Item A, city manager's report, Mr. Garcia, do you have anything? And then item B is staff reports, and we don't have any reports for them as well. Okay? So then, moving on to item nine, public hearings. At this time, the mayor will invite members of the public who have filled out the public hearing and the citizen communication form to address each item listed in this section. Please limit your comments to the topic of that public hearing. If more than one public hearing is being held, you will be allowed to speak during each topic, provided you have filled out the public hearing and citizen communication form for the appropriate topic. If you are signed up for two or more public hearings, you will be limited to five minutes for all topics, and at this time, we don't have any signed up.
At this time, we have item 9A, public hearing for the voluntary annexation and to establish the initial zoning to Light Industry District upon annexation for 4.50 acres of land out of Lot 5, Block 1, Harlingen Industrial Park subdivision number four, located north of Millennium Drive, approximately 688.85 feet east of FM 509. At this time, we'll open the public hearing on this item. Having no one here to speak for or against or signed up on this item, we'll close the public hearing on this item and move on to item 10.
Action items. City commission will discuss, consider, and take any action deemed necessary on items listed in this section, including the adoption of a resolution or an ordinance. 10A reads, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on second and final reading for the voluntary annexation and to establish the initial zoning to Light Industry District upon annexation for 4.50 acres of land out of Lot 5, Block 1, Harlingen Industrial Park subdivision number four, located north of Millennium Drive, approximately 688.85 feet east of FM 509.
In ordinance extending the corporate limits of the city of Harlingen by annexing for full purpose a 4.50 acre tract of land out of Block 5, Block 1, Harlingen Industrial Park to Harlingen Industrial Park number four, located north of Millennium Drive, approximately 688.85 feet east of FM 509, and to establish the initial zoning of Light Industry, L.I. District, binding the land to all of the acts, ordinances, resolutions, and regulations of the city, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
Sub move.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item 10B, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading establishing a uniform procedure for placing items on the agenda for city boards, commissions, and departments, providing for equal access by board members.
In ordinance establishing a uniform procedure for placing items on the agenda of city boards, commissions, and departments, providing for equal access by board members, providing for conflict resolution, and providing for implementation and effective date.
Yeah, I would like to speak on this. There's a company called General Mills. General Mills doesn't like what Kellogg is doing, another company. And General Mills says, well, we're going to tell you what to do and how to do it. And Kellogg says, you're your own corporation, you have nothing to do with us. And Kellogg says, we're our own corporation, you have nothing to do with us. And so I'm against this. It's not our job and our duty to manage other boards and commissions. The EDC 4A, 4B, the Water Works, the airport have their own boards, they hire their own legal corporations, they all have different tax ID numbers, they all have different boards that independently run them of the city, and they all have buckets of money, and in some cases, debt. So leave them all alone, please.
All right, so just talking a little bit about this ordinance, so it's recently, you know, looking over all of the boards of the city of Harlingen, it was an assumption, I think, of mine, and I would imagine of the rest of this commission, that all boards function similar to the city commission. We do have another commission, we have the Planning and Zoning Commission, we've got, you know, several multiple boards in the community, and every board has members that are appointed to those boards by this commission. And so the goal here is that every board member have an equal voice on each of the boards, just like the city commission here has a process, and the process works well because any commissioner on this commission with the, I guess, assistance of a second commissioner, any two commissioners can place an item on our agenda. And that's the process. And there, of course, it's got to be, you know, city commission jurisdiction, items that come before the city commission, but at no time does the mayor say, no, we're not going to allow that item to come on the agenda, should you get two commissioners to sign off on the agenda item. So what that means is that the mayor on the commission, along with the city manager and the city attorney at all times, can place items on the agenda, and most of it is routine business and items that are come before us from city staff and then goes to city manager, makes up the agenda. As of this, you know, the mayor can place an item on the agenda, two commissioners can place it, and that creates what we call a democracy, right? Where everybody has an equal voice. So what this is designed to do is to ensure there's not a single board in the city of Harlingen that is an appointment from the city commission, have more stringent rules than the city commission. So if you're going to oppose this, then there should be a consideration to remove the ability for two commissioners to place an item on the agenda, because that's what we currently do. We want to set the example for the rest of our boards, and we feel that that is an appropriate process, and that makes it for the opportunity for every voice to be heard. And just because, which we've seen here in this commission before, just because two commissioners join in to place something on the agenda, that doesn't necessarily mean that they are giving support for that item. It just means that it makes it to the agenda, so you can have an open dialogue and moving forward. So unlike the corporations that, you know, one has nothing to do with the other, every city board, every city board has appointments from the city commission. They're not independent in that they are elected by the citizens of Harlingen, or they're appointed by another body, they're appointed by this body, and so it should be that if you put someone on the, I don't know, let's say, the CDVG board, and you put someone on the CDVG board, and so does Reenie, and, you know, it so happens to be that my appointment is the chair, and the chair would place everything on the agenda as long as the director, and then if the two board members want to place something, they'd fill out a form, and it would make it to the agenda, similar to how things are done at the city commission. I was under the assumption that that is what's happening across all boards, but that's not what's happening because there is nothing that says that that's the process. It would be understood. I would imagine that most boards would have a professional courtesy to just have an open conversation and be able to go and approach the chair or the director to be able to place things on the agenda, but, you know, if it's not in writing, it doesn't mean that there's a process. And so that's what this is designed to do, and so I would caution, if you want to oppose it, then I would say, let's entertain that commissioners are not allowed to place items on the agenda, so that way we can be fair throughout the city.
May I rebut? So the commissioners here can place items on our corporation sessions. And we appoint people to different boards and to different commissions, and maybe I'm naive, but I, when I appoint somebody, I think, well, they must have some sort of moral compass, they must have some sort of life experience, they must have some sort of business experience, and they must have some sort of life knowledge that will bring them the skill set to speak properly and act properly on a commission or on a board. Beyond that, I don't need, we don't need to micromanage any commission or board beyond the people we appoint.
I think you're not understanding the point of this. No one's saying that they're going to be micromanaged. In fact, they're being empowered to be able to have dialogue within their respective boards, because right now, then, that is not the case, and so the items on the agenda will only be that of the chair of each board. And so the items on the agenda will only be that of the chair of each board.
Madam Mayor, if I may, would you like to, would you would like to relinquish your, your board member from the EDC and a board member from the airport board, since you have two, to make it an even playing field?
Okay, so, so...
So I guess the answer is, no, you don't, you wouldn't want to do that.
Okay, number one, a charter says that the, and I wasn't here when that happened. So the citizens of Harlingen would have to vote on a charter amendment to make that change, number one. And number two, there's bylaws for the EDC. Should the EDC want to change that, by, by all means. But I do think that there's processes in place and those processes are in place for those boards. And two people to place something on the agenda on any board. I don't have two board members on each board.
No, you, you have them on the EDC A board and on the airport board.
Sure.
And then as, because I witnessed what happened last week at the airport board. It was a little bit appalling. You had our attorney that was there present for a few minutes, then he disappeared. I don't know what he was doing there. If you want to have a meeting with certain people behind closed doors, then all of a sudden, it was over and he left. It got a little heated. You were adamant about keeping, wanting the airport to use the taxpayers' funds for the ADT.
I think you're deviating and nobody's going to be able to follow your train of thought. I understand your concerns, that's not what's on here. What the question is, do you want to have two board members be able to place items on the agenda? If you don't want two board members to place items on the agenda similar to what the city commission, that means that you want the commissioners to have the authority to participate, to place items on the agenda, but you do not want a single board member, unless it's a chair of any board throughout the city, to have the same rights that you have. That's what this is about and, and kind of, you know, getting into the weeds about something else is not what's before you.
Okay, let's do this. Then I move to table this item to will have, till we have the newly elected commissioner out of district one to be sworn in, because they will be part of this.
Okay, so you have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
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 Right, fails. Do you have any other questions?
No.
Okay, so just to be clear, this is to mirror what the city commission has currently.
First off, Frank, I don't know why you would not support this. Because imagine when we first got elected, when you and I first got elected, we, you and I were putting things on the agenda that at the time, the mayor at the time would not have wanted. So imagine if we did not have the power, let me just finish. Imagine if we did, you and I did not have the power to put things on the agenda, that he could just say, you know what, I don't want this on the agenda, it's not going to be an agenda. So all the great things that we could, that we were able to accomplish in the beginning when we first got elected would not have happened. But they happened because you and I had the power to join up, to put something on, on the agenda and get things done. That is the, that is the only thing that we're, that I understand that this is trying to get done. We're trying to be done.
Let me ask you something.
Yes.
After that meeting, okay, airport meeting, you tore off after the gene, the airport board.
All right, let's stay on...
No, no, let's stay on...
No, no, Commissioner.
But ma'am, you ended up talking for over an hour and a half.
Commissioner, stay, if you have any questions regarding the item before you, I'm happy to entertain them for an hour.
Could I answer his question?
I didn't ask a question.
That was not a question.
I didn't ask, I asked, imagine if it had been that way when we were first selected. Would you have been okay with that? Would you have been okay with them saying, no, you guys cannot put something on the agenda?
Let's use your wording.
Okay.
Imagine...
Imagine?
A student going after you after class because they disagree, is that acceptable?
First off, the, it's not even the same, you're talking about a student and a teacher.
It's exactly what you did a couple of nights ago. I guess you forgot already.
I went after, I had a teacher, I didn't know, I thought I was already educated and got my degree.
Let's stay on, on task, gentlemen.
If I, if I can just jump in, if you don't mind. Commissioner Morales, I also had that concern when I first read this because there are opportunities that you could have two members that belong to one member of the city commission start putting things on the, on those two boards, right? I have that concern. But my practice has been on all the different boards that I have served on is that this two members, whether it's the chairman, whether it's like a director or whether it's two members of the, whatever board it is, whether it's, you know, commissioners' court or whether it's a city commission or all that, have this authority. So it's, in, in my mind, the way I'm viewing it, is it's just coming in line with what's already a common practice.
Let me make one point, okay? One of the things that's a big concern for me, okay, this is what's happening under this roof, okay? In three years' time, we're working on our third HR director. We're working on our sixth risk manager. And number five...
Commissioner Morales, I, I still, I want, we, you know, we want to be respectful of everyone's time. Please stay on the agenda item. I don't know how personnel has anything to do with the item before you.
It's, it's basically what you're going to do, what you're trying to do with the airport.
I don't, okay, so again, this has nothing to do with personnel. It has everything to do with procedure. What I am hearing from you, and it's okay, that you do not want two board members of any board within the city of Harlingen to be able to place an item on the agenda. That is your opinion, that is pure prerogative, I respect it. And, and I think that that's fine. But you're getting into the weeds of reading into this and, and making these connections that don't exist.
But they, they will be in due time, thank you.
So if, if I may continue. The various boards and chair, have chairs, and the chairs write down the agenda. They can communicate with their members and say, yeah, this makes sense, yes, this doesn't make sense, and put it on their specific agendas. It's not for us to control all these individual corporations that happen to exist in the city of Harlingen. Well, our job is to control ourselves.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, I move to, do you have any condition, amendments or...
Oh, yeah. Something that caught my eye also on this, this item is that I would like that the agenda items that are brought forth have to be relevant and applicable to the board that they're on.
I agree.
So, Mark, I can get with you on the language, but essentially, you know, if it's, I don't know, the Cape Harlingen Beautiful Board, it can only be...
It'd be pertinent to the board.
Pertinent to the board, not just, you know, anything, right, so...
They can't decide that they want to have December 5th to be whatever day, that they don't have the jurisdiction to, to do, just to put it in a, in simple terms. Is there any other discussion? I move to approve this item with the amendment or the condition placed by Commissioner Lopez.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. We're going to move on to item 10C. Consideration and possible action to approve a variance to the city of Harlingen code of ordinances to allow one instead of two required entrances for the proposed horseshoe point subdivision located in the 3.5 mile ETJ on the south side of Morris Road, approximately 2,095.97 feet southwest of South Ed Carey Drive. This item was tabled during the regular city commission meeting of October 6, 2025. Do we need another motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'm going to make a motion, but I want to say that I was very uncertain coming into this meeting. I'll make a motion to accept this.
Can we do it table first?
We need to take it off the table again.
Oh, oh, okay, make a motion, take it off the table.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So I'll make a recommendation to approve. What sold me on this was the amount of houses are going down from 390 to 350. There's going to be a section of four lane highway. And that horseshoe lake is going to be eight times the Lozano Pond drainage holding. And that's what sells me on this. They are intense about drainage, as I am.
Mayor, Mayor, I would ask that the motion be phrased to grant a conditional variance to take place upon annexation.
Sub move.
Okay. So my concerns were everything that was raised here today. And so just for the public, this is the variance. This is a stage of a preliminary stage. Excellent points, Commissioner, and great presentation by all. I know this took us a while to get here and we appreciate everybody's patience and indulgence. And we definitely appreciate y'all coming out and giving, and talking with us. But for those that know that it, you know, moving forward, this is the variance. I do have some concerns and I think legal will look into that in terms of annexation. And, and so the conditioned upon means at each phase, is that what, what your recommend, your recommendation is?
When that piece of property comes into the city, it'll be, it's, it'll be effective upon annexation of that.
Can we have that variance that is conditioned upon that all three phases?
I, I don't know the construction schedule for the...
I think so, the next, the next item that we're going to bring to you is going to be the PD. So I think as long as you approve the variance, I mean...
I, I think the...
That can be...
The district will resolve a lot of these issues, yeah.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion on the table by Mike with the amendment proposed by Saucy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second?
Just going down this path.
I know.
I brought it up last time. We really need to take a very hard look at fixing Morris Road and expanding it regardless of, again, if this dies, subsequent death. We need to take very serious, Robert, and just start as if we're moving forward, right? Like already talk to the county and, you know, give you direction to just start the process to get it, Morris Road into a city road and then start designing the new road so we can start the expansion. It has to be done. If that's okay with you, Commissioner Morales, it's your district, but it's something I feel...
Well, at the end of the day, the south portion of Morris belongs to him. The north side belongs to me.
It belongs to the citizens of Harlingen.
Well, we just need to get it...
Okay, so you want it specific?
Yeah. That's all right.
Well, see, one of the things that, that's a concern for me is, is this variance. It's never been applied to anything over 30 homes. And we're going to apply over 250 homes. That's a concern. And for that reason alone, yes, I like the fact that we're going to have a, the drainage should be improved 100%. If I'm mistaken, White Oak is under a 10-year storm situation to where that, that's, that's the max for right now because it was built in the early 2000s. We have increased that to the 50. I still have not received the report from CSC to review that and see if that's going to be incorporated. But that's not on you, okay? So this variance, that alone is a concern. For me alone, I'm not ready for that. I'm not ready to accept what I'm being told right now.
Okay. So we had a motion and did we get it, we had a second? And did you condition, did you make an amendment to the motion?
No, I'm just giving Robert and we can bring it back.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Item 10D, create consideration and possible action to allow a license to encroach 20 feet by 45 feet more or less into the existing 20-foot alley right of way adjacent to the property located at 1230 Greenway Street, bearing a legal description of 0.02 acre tract of land, more or less being a portion of a 20-foot alley right of way adjacent to lot eight, lot nine, A3 subdivision of blocks one, two and nine, Green Acres subdivision. And we have planning and development.
Good evening again. This item is a request to grant a license to encroach measuring approximately 20 feet by 45 feet into an existing 20-foot alley right of way adjacent to the property located at 1230 Greenway Street. The purpose of the encroachment is to allow a proposed parking lot that will serve a proposed fourplex apartment development.
And this is a paper alleyway?
Uh, yes. And they will be, they will be making the improvements. Okay. Okay, so here's the property survey, we show the property lines and as well as the Eastman in the back. This is the subdivision plot showing the 20-foot alley and a 20-foot alley Eastman right behind it. And that's why you see that little triangle thing, which looks really odd. I'm here with the side plan showing the proposed fourplex, or two duplexes.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Okay.
Question?
Yes.
I know that they're supposed to maintain it. Not only are they going to build it or pave it and then maintain it.
Yes.
What if they don't maintain it?
Well, we can revoke the license because that's one of the conditions that we're recommending.
But it's already, the, the, the parking spots are already going to be built. So they build it, you revoke the license, but it means nothing. It's a, like a revocation on paper, but there is, right? That's...
I mean, yes, and that's something for you to consider. The staff is recommending approval, subject to those conditions.
All right, I make a motion to approve, subject to the conditions imposed by staff.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
Okay, item 10E, is consideration and possible action to approve the purchase of a John Deere 325...
Is this a by-board or one of those similar things?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, moving on to item 11, board appointments. Specifically appointed or discussion and possible action to include appointment and or removal of any position subject to appointment or removal by statute, ordinance or bylaws. Do you have any...
None.
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 I have three. Reappoint Adele Clinton Solis to Parks Advisory. Reappoint Carlos Sanchez to Planning and Zoning. Reappoint David Hernandez to Healthy Harlingen Advisory Board, if that board still exists.
None. None.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve all the appointments made by Commissioner.
Second. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, item 12, it's executive session. All, all items listed in this section will be deliberated in a closed session. Members of the public are not generally permitted to attend a closed session. Executive session items may be considered as an action item at the discretion of the mayor. However, city commission will not take any action in closed session. 12A reads consultation with legal counsel pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071-1 regarding pending or contemplated litigation and pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071-2 to receive confidential attorney-client communication protected by the attorney-client communication privilege. All right, is there a motion to go in executive?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. The time is now 7:47 PM. We'll retire to executive session, be out shortly. And thank you to all the staff that came out and presented. The time is now 8:11 PM. We are out of executive session and we do not have any action items. And at this time, we are adjourned, thank you.